...the fact that the open meeting, folks here, it's really close to everybody there. With that, we'll have Cliff.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna have a room call. Murphy?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
In the agenda that was sent out to our packets, um, we then overlooked the fact that we need to have the committee reports or potential committee reports and administrative reports. So at this time amended agenda to have those included in part of this evening's.
Yeah, I'm motion for.
We have motion to do that. I'll make it.
Second.
Pikes?
Yes.
Jason.
Jason seconded.
No, Jason.
Jason made the most.
Mayday, uh, James.
Second. Pike?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Okay. We'll, um, next item or the first item would be to approve the claims. Or approve the minutes, excuse me, for regular meeting and the special meeting.
I'll put the minutes for the regular meeting.
I'll second. Regular meeting has been approved, the second. Warren?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yep.
Pike?
Yes.
Special meeting.
I'll make a motion.
You. Just give me a Warren. I'll second. Second and by the way. Murphy?
Wasn't near, so I thought, was that, yeah, was it, yeah, was it, yeah, I'm not, we postponed that, yeah, you're right, my bad, I'm wrong, yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Okay. The next item would be to prove points. Make a motion.
Second.
Make a motion, second, uh, Murphy? So do Pike?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, move on to the next item, which would be public comments. Oh, yeah, we signed a sheet up there.
Oh, I just gotta sign it.
You need the microphone or?
No, I take them, I take them, you don't have to know this.
Alright.
Okay, I'll deliver it here if it's asking to come talk. I'm the chairman of the Eastland Township Board, and, uh, we're gonna have a town hall meeting Wednesday evening here. The reason is because our levy last November failed on the ballot by six votes, for whatever reason, I don't know. It's confusing, the way they have the right, the, uh, the, uh, the language and the, on the, uh, ballot that, uh, if, if everybody thought we were gonna raise it to twenty-three percent, that's not true. We can raise it to twenty-three percent if we have a hundred fifty-year disaster or wash off our loans out, or we, we can prove our history that we're eleven percent over thirteen years, that's all we're going, and we can go up to twenty-three percent in a disaster. And, uh, I don't know, that was a confusion, because that's everybody, when we asked people what happened, that's what they said, they misunderstood the rea- that maybe another thing. So now, uh, we have to have a town hall meeting to, uh, basically say that we're going to go away from the boat, uh, the, uh, boat last November. And, uh, we need sixty-nine people present to ten- to set the township, because Crofton is part of the township. So we're encouraging, we've been having the paper, and trying to call people and let them know, all the board members can come, bring their spouses, or whoever I mean, to come, because, I mean, we gotta have sixty-nine people present, or coming and signing in as well. And we're gonna actually be here just a little bit early, and get the process going, and, uh, that's what it amounts to. And then, uh, once we get that passed, we said we have majority vote to get it passed, then we can go on, because right now, it's, right now, we can't, we have no funding for the township, and also the library gets ten percent of our budget right off the top in Crofton, so it's, it's everybody's.
Are you okay, Mark, I have a question?
Yep.
What exactly does the township do?
Uh, we maintain, yeah, now I should tell you, our, our, our main budget is we, uh, thirty-six sections, that's what a township is.
Okay.
We maintain all the roads, there's no removal gravel, uh, culverts, that's our main budget. I mean, so we have one, a guy hired, he's basically just, he's known full-time, our kind of mental road grader, and we maintain, and we also, Eastern Township does, uh, freight goods maintenance on the roads, and we do a little bit for hanging parks down along the river during summer, it's all, just for the roads, that's our main, but, uh, yeah, this is a age-old process, uh, they had that town hall meeting twenty, twenty-five years ago for some reason, and they struggled, sixty-nine people here, they were hunting that evening, go out to get it so we could finish the meeting, so, we've been pushing a little harder to find, make sure we check out.
So you're out of funding as of now?
Well, no, we have, we're always a year ahead, we have enough till next, uh, it's July, you know, this will just end, it turns over to June.
Sure.
But, yeah, we're just working, and then when, uh, once we get this done, uh, Joanne told me, uh, to make sure everybody knows, it's gonna be on the ballot in, uh, next May, and we need to pay the vote for it, and it's gonna be the same, uh, word we have in the, uh, of the ballot sheeting, or, but it's, we're still, I mean, I can leave the sheet, or anybody can look at it, one, this is our past history, thirteen years, how, how much it'd take, and I mean, we're, we're running as tight as we can, we basically, you know, it is, we have to double, double our budget the last, we used to survive at fifty-six thousand, and, I mean, we couldn't even grab off roads, and we haven't hit fifty-six, and then, you know, like, everything's getting bigger and heavier, and it's gravel, it's, get their, all the good gravel's gone, we need softer gravel, but it lasts as long, so it's taking more gravel, and that's what it amounts to. So that's what it is, Wednesday night, seven-thirty here, we'll be here at the auditorium. So if anybody that wants to come, we'd appreciate it, it's gonna be real quick, I mean, you can sign your name and vote, and, and that's all it's gonna take, we're just gonna open the meeting, and basically, we just have to vote the vote process, and then we'll be over. So obviously, this here, anybody can, they won't again, it's, it's just our past history of thirteen years, so it's, that's a lot of what it amounts to, so, hopefully everybody can come, because I'm pretty confident we'll get it, wait a look, so, that's all I have for any other questions, so.
Are you asking for an increase?
No, we're, we're staying the same, I mean, actually, I mean, we, we're actually putting lower the levy amount, because the valuations keep going up, and we're just trying to stay at the same amount. We try to keep, uh, we used to carry over twenty thousand just for emergency, but we have a breakdown of the main road grader, road grader, and I don't think you can get a shop fixed to fifty thousand anymore. So, and, and blades are outrageous, and everything else, and fuel is gonna go up again real quick, so that's gonna be a major cost. That's all.
Thank you, thank you. Are you, are you going there, are you going?
Yeah.
People are proffing right here. This is the proffing issue, a half-cent tax supposed to go out for Aubrey Miller, and they have so many taxes right now, we're gonna be broke if you get so many taxes. And we got a board member up there, shared her names in a piece of paper, which is quite like a, like a little baby, can't even, can't even face the people and say what he done. Look, Crofton, what, what are you gonna do right now? What are you gonna do about the situation? We're going down, Crofton's going down in the deep end right now with all the taxes, we can't probably afford to stay here, no one else probably can. But I, I'm saying, people, wake up and see what they're doing, and watch your lies up there, because they are lying to you, like Bob's lying about the half-cent tax supposed to go to Aubrey before they fired him, bye.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, yeah, go for it.
Alright.
Did he, I would just, uh, you know, this is recorded, do I need to mark the phone?
It's up to you.
I think everybody can hear me. I would just like the, the record to reflect, that yes, I appreciate being called a nice guy in the newspaper, and yes, I did sign my name, Larry, because you were doing your job, and you weren't harassing certain people I probably wouldn't have. But also, you convinced me, and this other nice guy, that we needed an audit of twenty thousand dollars, so I just would like the record to reflect that these two nice gentlemen spent twenty thousand dollars on an audit we apparently didn't do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, mainly, I just wanna, you know, say thank you, uh, to Larry, you know, because we have a little conduct here, right, we got those conduct, and says no member of the public pallet individual counsel or the mayor, but it's okay for them to call us out. I mean, it is public information, we knew that when we signed the petition, but, I mean, I just thought it's kinda funny, but you said, say thank you to us, so I'm saying thank you to you, so, thank you, and, you know, so, we did what we feel like is the right thing, and it's the wrong thing, people can, get their vote, and then decide. But I just figured since you said, say thank you, I'm just saying thank you back.
Thank you. Any others? If not, we'll move on. Through the first item, new business is the homecoming parade rally, closes street for parade request. The normal parade rally is at stable, it's on September...
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, at two P M.
You made a motion for that?
Oh, yeah, 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 we just need a motion, go ahead and prove that.
I'll make a motion to prove that, play your parade now.
Motion made by Murphy, seconded by Warren. Warren?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yep.
And Pike?
Yes.
Okay, the next item in business is, uh, Saint Rose Pro-Life Group Request. Go ahead, man.
Um, Flavort, uh, came in, she wants that all the other area churches have had a pro-life demonstration, peaceful demonstration, she asked that if they could have one, and I thought that you should give a chance to say yes or no to that. They won't be on the streets, they'll stay on the church property, it's only going to be an hour, and, as I said, very peaceful, but, uh, they would like to be able to have that, and have your okay for that.
Is it a school date, and what, or?
I told the first, I think it's a Sunday. And then you know what happened, the I told my first name?
Uh, it is a Sunday, it's not, hold on, it's a school.
So that's, we're gonna vote to approve that question?
No, I mean, I'm part of it too.
Okay. Okay, next item is the softball association request to update the complex. With that, I guess we'll turn it over to the gentleman here for the record.
Okay. I'm sure you all know me, I'm gonna give you a crude, we tried to get professional prints on this, we didn't get done in time, so, you get my poor prints, okay? And I'm gonna try to hopefully, I'm gonna make this hopefully really quick. Um, if you look at the prints, um, we have two problems down at the softball field, one is, we don't have enough seating, we don't have enough parking, okay? That's our two major problems. We had a stellar year this year, stellar, okay? So if you look at the print, our proposal is, since we don't own the fields, we're just kind of, um, trying to promote the fields, okay? Um, we're, we're a five oh one C three, we are nonprofit, we're doing this off of donations. So our proposal is, if you look at that print, if you look at the third base line dugout, nobody sits from where that picture is to the third base line, because you cannot see the field, okay? Our proposal is, we wanna take that dugout, and we wanna move it down third base line further, like a normal baseball field, softball field, we wanna move it to the left further, okay? So, then if you look at those two highlighted areas, where it's highlighted, and you got the little black streak behind it, we wanna put seating in there, um, six foot roughly, uh, where the black line is at, we wanna put a barrier there, two-foot barrier, either brick, retaining wall, something there, okay? So then, if you look above it, there's another highlighted area, about four foot up roughly, approximately, we put another seating area, kinda like the baseball field did, just a little bit different. We have a really good situation there, but we can never use it, because you can't put a lawn chair there, you can't seat anybody there. We had huge tournaments, nobody sat from behind the dugout to the third base line to the upper field. So this is our, kind of our plan, this is one of our plans. So then if you look at that little scribbling thing to the left, above the, uh, above the, uh, the hydrant there, the water fountain there, um, we wanna kinda fill that in, lift that a little bit, and then if you look a little triangle thing above it, maybe a grandstand. So we lift that whole area, um, grandstand to the left, so we have seating for the upper field, because we are short of the field, we have nobody that can sit from the home plate to the right side because of our contour. So we like to lift that, maybe put a grandstand in there, uh, or if nothing else, maybe lawn chairs, um, that's kind of our idea. Um, it's a major project, I mean, we're looking at fifty thousand bucks or better, okay? Um, but, before we start doing dirt work, we had, thought we better come to you guys and make sure that we can start moving dirt. I wanna start Wednesday, just so everybody knows, I know it's kind of a short deal, but I want to start two weeks ago, and we thought we better come to you guys before we start moving dirt. Larry?
Does that water hydrant have to get moved there, out of the road?
I don't think so, I think we're gonna try and incorporate something in with it, uh, the city did come, and they flagged it, we had everything located already, uh, on the top side, if you see above it, that's where the water line comes in, I think we can work with that a little bit. The other thing is, if you see where the pole light is, behind that third base dugout, we'd like to move that up above, up above where the parkin's at, to get that out of our, our way, it's about thirty, thirty, thirty-three feet, straight orange, um, so we run a little bit of stuff there, but whatever, um, 'cause that, that'd be kind of a bad spot for it, um, and if you kinda see the little scribble mark with the black marker in at an angle, that's where we'd like to put the, we'd like to canter that, that dugout that way, give us a little bit more area for, for seeing, um, we have all these big tournaments, this last year, we have nobody sitting from there to there, everybody's sitting over here, and we have two complaints, parking and seating. And we're gonna try and take care of both of the seating problem with this project, um, because we can, we can get half of it again on the bottom field, and we can get a little bit more in the upper field if we do this. But again, costs a lot of money, we're gonna kind of try and do this in tiers, um, what we can afford, we'll do, um, we have a lot of different ideas, but I thought, well, we're gonna shoot this at you first, um, before we do it, I just wanted to have you okay that we can start moving dirt, um, to make it better.
We need a motion on that, right there.
I think so.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and.
One second.
Do we need, do we need a permit for that?
I don't know, uh, that's what I'm here for, I'm just.
Should've been a law giving.
Do we, we have a buil- we need a building permit, I don't know if we need it, city limits or not, I, my words.
City property, I don't think you need to have.
Okay, that's, that's.
And we can't reply for, turn to him, I've been along here too.
If it's under city property, I don't think you need to have, you know, they consider Crofton's building all the time, but it's city property, not the personal property.
I'll, I'll put a permit in if we have to.
Uh, it'd be a problem, get in my ear.
Yeah.
I, I think we should just put it in for, just, cover it. I'll make a motion to further the project.
I'll second it.
I'll agree.
With that, Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Pike?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all you do for town.
You know what, I did, I didn't use my. Real quick, I'm just gonna give you a little bit of, little bit of information, okay? And maybe you guys really don't care, but I'm gonna give you a few, I'm pretty proud of this. Um, we have a hundred and seventy kids, signed up this year, okay? A hundred and seventy kids, baseball, softball, we have, uh, uh, ninety-five and seventy-five, ninety-five softball girls, seventy-five baseball kids, okay? If you put this into thinking that they come down there from May, May first, maybe before that, all the way to July fourth, three times a week, you think how many people come into Crofton, that, okay? We have three major tournaments, major tournaments, and we have recognition for every one of those tournaments, okay? Of course, when we have the big tournament, the big sixteen, fourteen, eighteen team tournament in there, we have to have three inches of rain. We know what happens, we had it right on time, because we had that air line down there, we nailed it, okay? So I think it's worthwhile, um, putting time and effort into this to make it work. I'm not here to ask for money, but I tell you what, is we gonna put money anywhere? I feel it's down there. I really do. Okay? We are a five oh one C three, so if anybody wants to donate money, we will take it, because we will get two receipts, it's a hundred percent tax deductible, hundred percent. Uh, if you ever go down to the concession stand down there, we have bats up there, and if you donate a thousand dollars, you get a bat, and it's just called a single, it's a thousand dollar bat. We have single, double, triple, and home run, we have all four of them there. Right now, it shows that we have nineteen thousand dollars donated, which is not right, because those four thousand dollar donators need a lot more than that, and we have a lot more people that donate money that don't want their name on those bats. We started in two thousand nineteen, eighteen, nineteen, and I'll guarantee you, there's fifty thousand dollars donated down to that project, and there's gonna be more coming. And with, our big project is, we're gonna try to put this in the paper, we're gonna try to go and get great some money for this project, and, uh, I really feel it's worthwhile going, just because of the number of kids that keep showing up, and we did really well. I don't know if you ever paid any attention, softball, baseball, baseball kids won their commission, we won our league, we woke, you know, we got bumped up to class C, we won the class C, we got bumped up, we ended up in the middle of the class, even in state for our girls, so.
The next question, the next one should be sent to?
Crofton Volunteer Fields.
Address?
Uh, address is?
Uh, five five one seven zero Knox Avenue, we'll get it there, it's the clinic address.
Yeah.
Five five what? Five five one seven zero Knox Avenue.
Again, the, first, first words?
Crofton Volunteer Fields. Everything that we do down there is volunteer, just so everybody knows. Um, we have, not to drag this out, but we have some really great volunteers, Scott, Laura Morrison, hats off to them, okay? Um, we have three girls that run concession stands, hats off to them, they make it, they make our lives a lot easier. I'm just stupid coach, I tell you what, those kids are awesome. So, other than that, that's all I got, thanks for appreciating, I mean, I appreciate it.
With that, we'll move on, next item in business is hiring auditor, uh, auditors for yearly audit, the state of Nebraska, um, state auditors withdrew or declined to, uh, continue with the audit process, so we'll seek out an independent auditing firm, this one's highly recommended, does multiple, well, the communities around there, in our area, if you look, is the majority of, within, uh, stone's throw have this particular firm. I'll second it. What's his name, his maiden seconded, Mr. Murphy?
Yep.
Mr. Pike?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yep.
Alright. Next item would be to approve the resolution for recall, um, the date would be, what is it, November fourteenth? The recall, what's that? Do we need to read that resolution?
City of Crofton, Nebraska.
Yeah.
City of Crofton, Nebraska, resolution number twenty-two-three dash four, be resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Crofton, Nebraska. Section one, the city of Crofton will call for an election pursuant to the Nebraska statutes, Nebraska revised number thirty-two dash thirteen oh six S slash S two, to determine the recall of city council member Larry Pike, which requires the approval of the qualified electors of the city of Crofton. Section two, a recall election is hereby called and shall be held on the fourteenth of November twenty-two-three, and at which election there shall be submitted to the qualified electors of the city of Crofton the following question, shall Larry Pike be removed from the office of Crofton City Council, yes, no? The recall election to be held on the fourteenth of November twenty-two-three will be a by mail election, with ballots to be mailed to eligible registered voters within the city of Crofton. Section three, the city clerk shall cause a certified copy of this resolution to be delivered to the Knox County Clerk, the Knox County Clerk will publish the notice of election in the Crofton Journal on the required date as per Nebraska revised statutes. Before going resolution having been read and upon motion and a second court's passage and adoption, and after consideration thereof, the roll was called on the passage and adoption of said resolution with the city council members voting as follows, a, nay. The passage of the resolution number twenty-three, or twenty-two-three dash four, having been considered to a majority of the members of the council, was declared passing its adoption this eleventh day of Nebraska, November twenty-two-three, city of Crofton, Nebraska, and has to be witnessed by myself and the mayor.
Any questions? I guess the one I would have is to, somewhere I'll give reassurance of one way or the other about the ballot, the pay of the ballot, if they have clarification on, yeah, if it's postage due or postage paid, so we don't have to go through that ordeal. If that, not we need a motion as such.
Need a motion, or you're gonna, yea or nay?
We, we need a motion to accept this resolution.
I'll make a motion in doubt for that.
I'm sorting.
No, it's called the.
Pike?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
And Murphy?
Yep.
So, I, I need your signatures on this, please.
Okay, with that, moving on, would it be to set a hearing for the ones. Okay. With that, moving on, will it be to set a hearing for the one's six-year plan?
Uh, we need to have it done, uh, next month, and, uh, when, uh, Mr. Napier was here, he presented it to us, but, uh, he saw for us in the future and what it was gonna cost us, which streets are looking at to, to get, uh, taken care of, and we need an open hearing for that. And, um, we are going to have a budget hearing on the twenty-fifth of this month. Uh, I thought it might be good if we did that, or you can wait until October if you'd like to for the hearing.
December twenty, September twenty-fifth, they have a budget.
Yeah, the budget hearing is gonna be the twenty-fifth, yeah.
That's the six thirty?
Yes.
So, you wanna do that in conjunction with the one and six-year plan, or do you wanna do two separate things, or what are your preferences?
Maybe in one of these times.
It's up to you. Are you guys willing to?
Maybe sometime.
We have a motion to that, okay?
Well, no. I couldn't find anything in the minutes, so.
All right.
Wish I could.
All right. Moving on, the next thing is street allocations for the fiscal year and the bids for the street repair. I guess, uh, maybe your concern is that what of our street money needs to be spent on or before the first of October?
Uh, I talked with Mr. uh, Popey, and he said that we've actually already spent the amount of money that we need to spend this year, and the one and six-year plan actually shows what you're projecting to use your money for in the next year and, and the years after that. So, that shows that what you plan to use your allocations for. Uh, so we have used quite a bit of it already. He said what we needed to spend, we have spent. And we have plenty of projects still to do.
Any other questions about the street repair? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the first item of all business would be to paint more streets. We have a bidding package from Mr. Vogel to finish, not complete, I think it's pretty much finished up the rest of the, both sides of the park, south of the auditorium, both sides of Kansas Street and Second Street Alley. We have a bid of thirteen, uh, fifteen hundred and thirty dollars for that. Do you like to get that taken care of?
I'll make a motion to hire again. I thought we did hear you.
Captain, we had a lot of compliments, motions made in second. Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yep.
And Mr. Pike?
Yes.
Okay, the next thing is, uh, softy, softball safety lighting plan. Don't have your pa- uh, your package able to come these copies out to you, but I had, this is that, they approached me again, uh, Merkel family, Merkel, the Johnson and Leckardt, and said, there's a better option. Um, it's, it says, as you know, we, uh, have to re-mount two of the existing light fixtures. These kind of light fixtures are usually too brittle and whether to, uh, work with and will break when we try to handle them. As we may know, as you may know, they are all in the same shape. So, instead of trying to get a grant and try to still have to come up with more and more money to get new light fixtures, we are recommending using refurbished, um, ballpark light fixtures like the ones installed at the football field. They are inexpensive and will serve the purpose for many years of the softball field. Also note that they have an original estimate, um, has already been figured into the estimate, and I have attached a copy for your record. So, the, their plan is that they wanna get these refurbished lights and do them and, uh, the same qualities at the football field, and they're, give them testimony that they'll be as good and be able to maintain them for many, many years. The total cost for this lighting project is twenty-nine thousand ninety-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. Um, and he even went so far as to say, you know, if that's a huge financial burden force, they would, you know, pay it two fiscal years if we wanted to do that.
We're gonna take more lights or less lights and we're gonna have that.
Don't know. That's, I don't know. That's the total, the price he gave me doesn't have a number of lights or fixtures or anything on that, just to get it all fixed up. And he did say if there was concern about that, he was more than willing to, uh, to divide it up over two years. Uh, the cost for the other part of it was the replacing of the pole and installing new wires and new breakers and, uh, uh, the breaker panels on the eight poles and that. That cost was fifty-two, or seventy-two thousand fifty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. That's to make it safe. Now, if you wanna go ahead and look the light part of it, the rest of it, um, then it would be that twenty-nine thousand and two dollars a year.
Didn't, didn't we approve of putting the new wiring on the light tray of the pump and doing that, that breaker box on that?
Yep.
That's worth a pass for like eight thousand and nine thousand dollars, wasn't it?
It's seventy-two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents.
Seventeen.
Yep.
You two prices were ten dollars and eighty, but how is the lighting down there?
Terrible.
It is not, it, it's all, it's all lighting. I mean, it's.
Easy to upgrade.
It should be upgraded, but it's expensive to upgrade.
To upgrade to the, the same lights that are at the baseball, uh, football field, and they can get parts for them, and, uh, uh, you have refurbished ballpark lighting fixtures like the ones we installed at the football field. They're inexpensive and will serve the purpose for many years.
For twenty-nine?
Yeah. You can read through, I mean, I, I just, I'd send it down, and he didn't.
Was the light old or just not enough of them, or?
No, I'll tell you, uh, uh, so last year? Last year, I think it was, I went on eBay to find those quartz lights. They're a pushing light. That's the only place I could find them, but we did get us off, pretty close to reach, to.
Forty lights.
Forty lights.
And they were like, I don't remember the dollars, I, I'm guessing, but, uh, that's the only place I could find those lights to fix what we had. We had that.
Absolutely.
Yep, they're obsolete, yep.
And the new updated thing was two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, which would, we could get a grant for seventy-five percent of it, or, he didn't know for sure what it'd be, but it'd still be quite additional expense to get that. And then it's if you get the grant kind of thing, so, and you have to order them and wait, so it's up to you getting what you wanna do. But he did agree that we could, and if we wanted to, we could budget it over the course of two years, it wasn't an issue, um, as far as that. That's forty light fixtures, I guess it was, seven?
Forty, forty total lights?
Fix.
Any idea how many lights you have now?
Oh, boy.
Roughly?
There's a lot. There's a lot quartz lights, 'cause they're all quartz. There's, uh.
Probably sixteen to a pole.
I was gonna say about that, probably four, 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 you know, yep. And there's a pile down there.
There's, uh.
But these are better light, these.
It's the, it's not the new new lights, the new new lights are the LEDs. This would be a.
Step up.
A step up.
Upgrade.
Up there, yep.
Have you been talking with Merkel about it?
I have talked to, uh, a Rick, um, 'cause I wanted to move that one pole and stuff, and, and, uh, a little bit of stuff that I've done with him, but I never got the dollar figures or nothing. So, I said it'd be nice if we do this, but.
And the timing of it would be all right now. When you're moving a pole, it'd just be, it'd be perfect timing, but it's up to you guys what you wanna do.
Hey, one thing I did, and I can say this now, the only thing I did forget to mention is, uh, we don't have any security lights down there. So, when we drop the lights on the softball field, it is, it's blocked.
It's blocked.
Okay? We, the REA did put a new LED light up there, but there's no power to the LED light. Okay? So, there's a brand new light up there, but no power to it. And the other problem is that since we had such a problem with, with parking areas, we've been parking to that east park over there. I'm usually the last one that walks out of the park. I drop the lights, and if there's anybody else that parks to the east park, you're never gonna find that culvert. There used to be a security light by that culvert over there where that new pole's at, but it's not there.
They, they told me, I talked to, uh, Cory Fisher, that they would put a, a pole and a light there, and we'd have to get electricity to it. Be about four hundred dollars for the pole and the light fixture that the REA had supplied. We just gotta get power to that.
There should be power, 'cause the one time there was a security light. Yep, but I'm just saying it, it'd be well worth it.
With football going on, it'd probably be a good thing to know where that culvert is and that bridge is.
You'll never find it if you don't have your phone.
Why?
If I had, uh, Cory ever to get a whole week, it'll be four hundred dollars for a pole and a light, and you'd have to get the electricity to that pole. There was some electricity down there. I thought we could come off of it. Don't that maskin' down there, that, uh, electricity and all that? We could probably add somebody transfer wire and work to that pole, by the way.
Sure.
There used to be power to that pole.
Right now, yep.
That pole, he told me that pole's not a REA pole, so you can't put a light on that pole. I don't know where that pole come from. It's a super huge pole. But he can't put his REA pole, REA light on somebody else's pole.
No. They have to get their own pole.
Yeah. That's what he told me.
And I think that was at four hundred dollars for the light and the pole.
Okay.
We need a motion to get lights? I'll make that motion.
We wanna, we wanna get back to that bridge that he's talking about, too.
Uh, question is first. We can only, well, that's not on the agenda.
Your motion was made by Murphy, seconded by one man.
Yeah, let's put that over there for a minute, Mike.
Yep.
Murphy?
Yep.
Pike?
Yep.
Over there?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to committee reports, planning zone. Economic development, uh, there. Tree board? Okay. Administrative reports, Donna has some more important things to say.
Uh, we got a nice thank you, uh, from the, um, dam places committee, thanking us as a team at the city of Crofton. A really big thank you for supporting Crofton's dam race again this year. The bats were a hit with the explanation point. Also, you told from us to ensure the roads were clear, edges were mowed, and town was ready for over two hundred sixty racers did not go unnoticed. And everyone of them signed it, and a thank you for the city for that. Um, okay, can I get a couple of things? Um, it's been brought to my attention, and I've actually witnessed it, that there is no, um, anything indicating school on Iowa near the elementary school and Saint Rosa School. Um, I looked into it. We, it would be nice when we're having all this painted, we may have to talk to Mr. Vogel again. But I think as we come up Iowa off of, uh, one twenty-one, we need to have a school sign that on the street, probably just around Sixth Street as you're going up, would be nice. And then also, I looked into Nebraska law, and where the stop sign is at the schools, they're supposed to be red or yellow on the curb, twenty-five to thirty feet back from the stop sign. Nobody is supposed to be parking up all the way up to that stop sign. Um, I saw, I, I've been going down to Lewis and Clark to get snacks in the mornings, and so I witnessed coming back, and I saw a little boy standing in front of that pickup, waiting to cross the street, and he couldn't see me, and I couldn't see him. I was going slower, my mom does that. I was going slow, but a lot of people aren't, and we need to do something about that. I actually think that we should, should suggest putting in a stop sign, and the city can do that, making that a four-way stop at Fifth and, uh, Main, is it Main or Iowa, Iowa, yeah, Iowa. That lane, everybody has to stop. We can do crossing, um, marks across so the kids can cross where they're supposed to onto the sidewalk. But we've gotta stop them cars from parking up to that stop sign where you can't see them kids at that sidewalk. So, I would like us to ask, um, for more painting there, and then, as I said, it needs to be, it needs to be bad.
Some of those teachers that teach the same roles, you know, I talked to one of them, and he was a bigger math, and then somebody else, school teacher, parked a little close to that stop sign.
Yeah.
So, when you come up there, you can't see, you know, anybody from the cross or anybody there.
And it's illegal to park where the, the, uh, curb is yellow or red, and it's supposed to be twenty-five to thirty feet back from the stop sign where the last car can park. You can actually, if you are dropping your child off at the sidewalk, you can stop, you can do that, but you have to move on, no longer than a minute or two to drop kids off, so they can pull in there and drop them off right onto the sidewalk, instead of park in the street and letting them go over in front of those cars.
Is that something that we could get, Mr. Vogel, to do our school corners there, a little bit of some yellow paint?
I would like for you guys to decide to do that. I think that's a wonderful idea.
There's a curb going.
What?
There is no curb on that side. On the north side, going west, there isn't a curb.
No.
So, we'd have to put a sign, sign.
We'd have to put a sign up there, yeah. We have signs that we bought a while back.
We have signs that aren't exactly what they all are. I know we have street signs, a whole bunch of those, and we have ones for the city dump. I don't exactly know what they say, but.
When we put a sign over on the north side of that Iowa street, you know, Highway twelve, we got that sign, that blinking light. Maybe be nice to have like this, with a blinking light going on, it's a cautionary for kids.
During school times.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it blends, it blends on Highway twelve, when school's out and school's coming, so, so, whatever, morning.
And I had one of the bus drivers talk to me about it, too. It's just hard to see around that corner, and then, and the bus.
They moved it, they moved it back, and now somebody's parking in front of it.
Yeah, yeah. But they won't be able to do that if you have the curb painted, the color where there's no parking. Um, also, um, I had some requests for us to do something mandatory, to have house numbers put on the houses in the city. I kinda driven around, and there are a lot of them that don't have it. Uh, our story is, well, we've been trying to determine who's got hands and who doesn't. We, we had a, a question about who had extra toes, and they were trying to tell us where they're at, and it's not street, you know, house numbers everywhere, so we struggled with that for a lot. But we pretty well narrowed it down to this was the address here, and this was, we got that. But, uh, it would be nice, it'd also be helpful for in, uh, T's to know the street, uh, you know, and easy, the numbers don't cost very much. When I'm up, however you want, something pretty or just something useful.
I've seen some street signs, like, you know, fourth and Nebraska, I've seen some at the city yard, I don't know what's laying there. But I think they probably just need to be pulled up.
But I mean, house numbers, right? Yeah, I mean, house numbers. And I know some cities put them in the curb. That would be very helpful for us in the wintertime when they're covered with snow and stuff. So, it'd just be nice, we just ask people to please get house numbers and put on their houses.
So, can we make an informal formal request in the paper that we could ask people if they would please put house numbers on?
I think so. And, um, I'm going to be out of, uh, the office next week. Um, I'm going to Michigan for a couple of few days. And, um, Marlene Hines will, and Shontel will be in the office from eight in the morning till one. Um, they'll can take your payments or, and they'll take, um, you know, if you have a question, they'll write it down and get it to me, so I can get everything to you when I get back. So, I just let you know that I'm, I'm gonna be gone for a few days. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll have to put the, the formal request for the signing of whatever.
Can I ask?
Yep. Could, could you just go ahead and put that in your, uh, concern about the house numbers, being a lot of those well as a newspaper? I mean, you're.
Thank you, Mike.
So, as far as Dylan and painting, we'll put that on the next month's agenda, or do you?
The special needs?
Yeah, we can put it on the agenda for a special need.
Okay. Twenty, yeah.
Yep. Could you have specifics of the, of the, so, can you get that there? Would you email me the specifics, or Larry's can talk with him, so he can get exactly, can he be on this for sure? It needs to be yellow, I wonder, which is it, yellow or?
Yellow or red. I, you can't park on, at either one of them, so. But then, I've added, we kinda need the crosswalks, um, you know, out, we, and as I said, we don't necessarily have to be signs, but as you come up, if there's a big school sign written on the pavement so you can see it, you kinda know that you're coming into school zone, we could do that in three directions.
There's, uh, one more thing on a painting that Mr. Vogel was gonna do in front of the firewall, that curb is kinda high wall, right, and south there. He's gonna paint that all red, so people know not to park there.
That was a big thing for Carshay. Here you have a firewall or something, that'd be, you'd have no one to park there.
That's in that fifteen hundred and thirty dollars.
Okay, Dustin is not with us. I have nothing other than. I have nothing other than, we've got a thank you card from, uh, from Jim and his family for, for what we did there, that's, I think, Jim for that, anyway. I don't hand anything else at this point, time limits, or something else we'd like to discuss?
Would you motion to adjourn?
I'll second it. Motion is seconded, adjourned.
Yes.
Wilder? Murphy?
Yeah?
We are adjourned.